Person has arrived and we now begin the special town meeting. A quorum being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on September 11th, 2006. It was published in the September 21st edition of the Middleborough Gazette and was posted by Constable Patrick Kurnine on September 21st, 2006. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For this meeting, there have been appointed the following people as tellers. Marilyn Hunt, who will count that far side. Bob Marshall will count the middle and the stage. And Leanne Cataldo, who will count this side. They have been sworn into office by the Assistant Town Clerk Janet Tracy. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume town meeting time as the standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings, and it is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that there are two microphones, and they have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone may speak. Generally, this has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Or, in the case of zoning articles, I will seek the report, the Planning Board, and receive its report of its public hearing. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the yellow-colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. I would like to remind you that no food or drink except water is permitted in the auditorium. Before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Donald Bowles, who passed away on May 25th, 2006, was a member of many things. He was on the Board of Fire Engineers, of Selectmen, Plymouth County Advisory Council, Republican Town Committee, Chief of Police, Communications Commission, the Lakeville School Committee, a moderator for three years, Special Reserve Patrolman, and part-time dispatcher. Also, we would like to send our thoughts and prayers to our town clerk, Sandy Horton, who was unable to be with us this evening. Let us stand while I ask for a moment of silence. Please remain standing after the moment of silence so that we may honor our country I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Finally, I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. To my left, Janet Tracy, the Assistant Town Clerk, Rita Garber, Town Administrator, Kathleen O'Donnell, Town Council, Richard LaCamera, Charles Evers, and Nancy Yates, our select people, Martha Weeks Green, Richard Velez, Gary Mansfield, people keep moving around, Robert Hill, Steve Olivier, and Cindy McCrea, Town Accountant. If anyone requires a copy of the town warrant, please raise your hand now and a teller will get it for you. Other than that, you should have a copy with you. I see no hands raised. Now that I have, everyone has what they need, I need a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Motion has been made. Do I hear a second? Motion has been made in second. I don't see any discussion. All in favor, please say, raise your cards. Thank you. Put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. I see no cards raised. We do not have to have a reading of the warrant. Let us move to Article 1.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reduce the current year's appropriation for fiscal 2007 for certain purposes to make certain transfers to ensure that the town needs reductions for state revenue and local estimated receipts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to it, Mr. Selectman?
I haven't read the transfers yet.
Oh, okay.
Moderator, I believe they are in the back of the warrant.
It's page 20.
Page 20? Transfer $20,000 from the master plan article from Article 4, 112601, special town meeting. School K-24 operating budget, $46,000 from Article 2 of May 8th, 2006, annual town meeting. $25,000 from the stabilization account. Locational out-of-district tuition, Article 7, May 8th, '06, annual town meeting, $27,415. And reduce the landfill enterprise account general subsidiary by $10,000 for a total transfer of, total transfer reduction of $128,415 and appropriate for a special needs out-of-district tuition of $66,000.
Thank you. Has it been seconded? Mr. Velez has seconded. Would you like to discuss it, Mr. LaCamera?
Basically, the situation was that our new growth numbers, our revenue numbers for fiscal '07, which began on July 1st of this year, was $75,000 less than what we anticipated. And also, we recently found out in September that we had an increase in $66,000 in special ed out-of-district tuitions.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends?
Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Seeing no one approach the microphone, we will move it to a vote. This is going to require a counted vote. Ready tellers? Because we're using some money out of stabilization, we have to justify it by account. All in favor, please raise your yellow cards.
19.
Thank you. Mrs. Hunt?
48.
Thank you.
48.
48. Thank you. You may put your cards down. Now, all opposed, please raise your cards.
5.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you. The vote is 95 to 5. I declare it having passed by two-thirds. Article 2 has been withdrawn. Article 3.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Goodfellow, 29 Baker Lane, Lakeville School Clerk. I move that the town vote to transfer from the stabilization fund and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to cover the cost of the purchase of a steamer for the Assawam Sit Cafeteria.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made in seconded. May I have a copy of that, please? Would you care to speak to the article?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The steamer at the Assawam Sit School, which is used for the children's school lunch program, failed its mechanical inspection and was deemed unsafe to prefer the use. I understand that it is quite old and needs to be replaced in order for us to adequately maintain the school lunch program at the Assawam Sit School.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends it.
Anyone have anything further to say? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a required two-thirds vote because it's out of stabilization. We have to have a counted vote. All in favor of Article 3, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count.
19.
Thank you. Thank you.
31.
Thank you.
56.
Thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you. It's unanimous. 106 in favor and none opposed. Article 4. Mr. Hamilton.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 9, Section 34, 2A, in enforcement of Chapter 122, Acts of 2006, the amount of $103,397.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? State money?
Yes, this is state money that's given to us, but it has to be voted on to be accepted by the town.
Thank you. Finance Committee generously accepts?
Generously, yes.
I take it no one's going to debate this? All in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 4, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I accept it as passed unanimously. Article 5.
I move that the town vote to rescind this vote to accept Massunder Law, Chapter 32, Section 89B, under Article 17 of the June 17, 2002 Annual Town Meeting, which authorized the provision of a yearly income for the dependent spouses and children of qualified firefighters and reserve intermittent or special policemen who are killed in the line of duty based on the annual rate of compensation payable to a first-year regular or permanent member of the police or fire department, as there is now statutory authority set forth in Massunder Law, Chapter 32, Section 89E, which took effect in July of 2006, for the town to provide one of three different death benefits to the surviving spouse of any voluntary emergency service provider, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file special legislation with the General Court or take any other action necessary to ratify this vote.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. Would you care to discuss it?
Yes. Because of new legislation that was passed in July of 2006, Chapter 125 of the Acts of 2005, we have an opportunity to offer a better option now, which is providing a life insurance policy. And it turns out to be a better option.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend it.
Thank you. Nancy, would you pass the motion down? Thank you. Does anyone have a question? Yes, sir.
Mike McCullough, Call Caton's Fire Department. Just to give the voters some background on this, this was a, the EIB was a law that came in front of the town meeting four years ago and asked to have the town accept, at the time it was a local option law, and it only affected a very small minority of fire departments in the state. The law was written more than 40 years ago, and it definitely got some drawbacks, but that was all that was available to us at the time. Since that, as Selectman Gates said, the law passed, the new law passed this year. It is mandatory now, which somewhat makes the old law moot. So, we get together as a group of firefighters, I can't speak for the police, but we get together as a group and consult the Call Volunteer Firefighters Association, and went through some of the benefits, and we'd agree with the town that the new law, which is now mandatory, provides a better benefit. I would like to say, though, at the time from 2002, that the voters here and the town officials did support us in this at a time when it wasn't mandatory and enacted this local option law. And now it's stayed wide, unfortunately, it stayed wide. It took a young firefighter with a young family to die in the line of duty before this became something that was put through mandatory. But as a group of firefighters, don't have a problem if the old laws were drawn this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one is coming to the microphone, we can move this to a vote. All in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 5, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding, the residents of Lakeville Station Smart Road Overlay District, zones throughout the rest of the article as the S-G-O-D, as new IM 3.1.9, the list of used districts within the existing section 3.1, and by adding the following new section 7.7, and take any other action noted there, too.
Thank you. Before you proceed to read the next 17 pages.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who needs this read out? Because if you do, I'm going to put it to a vote of the people present. I see no one who objects to us not reading it out, so I am going to simply go by what is in print. Do I have a second to Mr. Merritt's motion? Motion has been made and seconded. Merritt, would you care to speak to it?
I will, Mr. Moderator. It's actually very simple. The development that we're overlaying a district on is currently a 40B, which the town has accepted. With the grace of the state and the help of our town council, we helped public hearing, we discussed it, and we decided that 40R has tremendous benefits for the town. And I guess the easiest way I can describe it is to paraphrase our town council, who basically said that 40R is a 40B with a check. It basically gives walk, local control over what happens in the area. Your only request that the state has is that it be located in a particular district that they're looking for that has all the qualifications of that district. This area happens to have that. They're looking really at developing a transient-oriented type development where people basically get on the train or have most of the services that they need within walking distance rather than getting to their car and driving around.
Thank you. Did the Planning Board have a report in their hearing?
Yes, we helped public hearing and we voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Mr. LaCamera?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Jim Merritt said. Originally, this project was approved as a 40B project a year ago, and there was a lot of discussion, you know, throughout the state for these smart growth initiatives. And with the help of Representative Kineser and Representative Quinn and Senator Manad, we started leading up with Department of Housing and Community Development back in May. And because what we wanted to do was convert this project into a 40R project, and there's been a lot of discussion throughout the state about these projects, but they really haven't been moving forward, and we've been given this opportunity to switch this project from a 40B to a 40R, and it's actually the same project. A lot of work went into this over the last four months with the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen and our town council here to the right, and Rita Garber, our town administrator. We have submitted an application, you know, to the state, a community application, the last week in September, and the application has been approved for this project on September 29th. So, all we need to do this evening is approve this bylaw, and then we can, the Planning Board would approve the site plan again. And what we get for this is a $350,000 zoning incentive payment. So, once this bylaw is approved, then we get $350,000 check immediately. Then what they do is they provide a density bonus, and the density bonus is for every unit that's built. In this particular project, there's 204 units, which means that we get $612,000 for that as well, for a total of $962,000. We also negotiated a mitigation fee with the developer of $300,000 for the project, so, which means we get $1,262,000. And previously, we would not have gotten all the state grant money. So, as our town council says, the difference between a 40B and a 40R is a big check. So, we highly encourage everybody to support this article.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Don Foster with the zoning board, and I'd like to report that at our September 25th meeting, the board unanimously voted its support for this motion.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming to the microphone, we will move to a vote. Oh, I am sorry. There is a someone, not a no one.
Joseph Chamberlain, Highland Road. This question or concern probably best directed to Town Council. Page 1, article, Boston Globe today, detailed the sleazy efforts of many dirt-bad developers in dealing with Chapter 40s. I would assume that there are sufficient safeguards in this, that in spite of the money we're getting, we're not going to be taken to the cleaners.
Town Council? Was that addressed to you?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually haven't read the article in the Boston Globe because I was already on my way to a meeting and the paper hasn't shown up, but I've certainly heard about it today from lots of places. Now, the inspector general has been investigating 40B projects, which, as you may recall, have a limit on how much the developer can make. They're limited to 20%. And some unscrupulous developers, given the recent rise in real estate prices between when they had the project permitted and when they actually sold, have tried to figure out ways to sort of bury those profits someplace, and so that the extra profit that they make over the 20%, which would otherwise go to the town for affordable housing purposes, is retained by the developer. I know the inspector general has gone through a number of these projects and has questioned the accounting principles that were developed and used by the developers on these. Massachusetts Housing Authority has also looked at these things and is proposing a new set of guidelines. We heard about these last week. They're supposedly rolling them out. They're hiring staff to monitor these projects. I have to say that it's probably a case of the regulations getting developed after the damage has already been done, because the number of 40B projects has actually declined in applications relatively recently, and I don't expect it to pop up in huge numbers in the near future. However, Mass Housing is putting that monitoring process in place now. The inspector general is paying some attention. We believe that the situation would be discouraged in the future. However, the 40R projects are monitored the same way, with DHCD watching, and have the same kinds of limitations, but they are not 40Bs, and they don't get the same, the same sort of scrutiny. They are zoning as a right, as opposed to zoning by permission from the CPAs. So, we hope with this particular developer that we won't have that particular problem.
Mr. Moderator, just to answer, to further clarify Mr. Chamberlain's question, the developer that we're actually dealing with currently has an approved 40B project on the table. I think you may be aware of that. But in this particular case, we're not dealing with a potential developer. We already know who that developer is, and he has given us every indication that he is a very scrupulous gentleman, and I'm very glad that he's the one who actually is handling the project. I mean, I don't think, he takes a tremendous risk in allowing the town to do this at the town's benefit, but he was willing to do it for the benefit of the town. To me, that speaks all by itself. May I, may I get a clarification, Jim? Are you saying that in effect, the developer is going to develop it no matter what, but if we don't vote this, this evening, we just don't get the money?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Brian Lewis, do you need my address as well?
It's up to you.
Brian Lewis, I'll leave it at that. Just a point of clarification, on the 40B as I know it, the 40B, of course, gets set aside, the 40R essentially takes its place, the 40B never comes back to fruition. It becomes a 40R project, that was the first question. The differences in the projects, as far as the credits, under the 40B structure, there's the 10% minimum that the town has complied with, has obviously a lot more control over future projects. Does that differ when it goes away from the 40B parameters? In other words, you know, is that still, are the credits granted for the units under 40R and give them those credits to Lakeville like they would be under 40B?
Do you want to handle that? Jim, do you want the Town Council?
Credits are, well, I'll defer to Town Council. The credits are still there. We gain benefit from all of them, and in this particular project, we gain all of them. It's just not 10%. We gain all of them.
And in answer to your first question, I'm going to defer to Town Council with your mic permission.
The units that are created in 40R district that are affordable count the same way they would in a 40B. So, they will count towards the town's 10% in terms of calculating and protecting the unit if the town prefers a 40B project. Because they are in a 40R district, there are required densities and there are required levels of affordability. But once those units have the D riders on them, they will count the same way as they would in a 40B.
And the parameters, as far as the qualification for the program, are the same for affordability?
Yes.
The same. And then, lastly, as far as the future of a 40R district versus a 40B, and correct me if I'm wrong, on a 40B project, the project is presented, it's approved, it goes forward, it gets built out in whatever number of phases. Once that 40R is established, does that then create an opportunity for further growth or further addition to the number of units or otherwise change in the structure of the plan as proposed initially?
It could. However, in this particular instance, we have a small district, and so it is really the parameters of this project. In some cases, Kingston, for example, the 40R that they're looking at is a long buildout, all kinds of things, but it's a much larger district. We have defined this district to be just this 40B project, so it can't really handle any additional growth, the parameters of the project that was originally approved by your zoning board.
Okay, fair enough. And then, I noticed it was the last one, but one of the questions.
No, this is the next, the last one.
This is the next, I promise this is the last one. As far as, actually, you know what? I'm sorry, the question was answered, I apologize.
Thank you.
It is the last one.
Yes, sir?
Carl Furst, Hill Street. Is there, are there any strings attached to the check for the state?
Yes, Mr. LaCamera?
As I said, the application has already been submitted to the state. The state has approved the application. We have the letter from DHCD, and once this gets approved this evening, and then gets approved by the Attorney General's Office, because all bylaws have to be approved by the Attorney General, then they will issue a check for $350,000. It's not going to be a 40B.
It is mandatory now, which somewhat makes the old law moot. So we get together as a group of firefighters, I can't speak for the police, but we get together as a group and consult the Call Volty Firefighters Association, and went through some of the benefits, and we'd agree with the town that the new law, which is now mandatory, provides a better benefit. I would like to say, though, at the time from Two Thousand and Two, that the voters here and the town officials did support us in this at a time when it wasn't mandatory and enacted this local option law. And now it stayed wide, unfortunately stayed wide. It took a young firefighter with a young family to die in the line of duty before it became something that was put through mandatory. But as a group, the firefighters don't have a problem if the old laws were drawn this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one is coming to the microphone, we can move this to a vote. All in favor of Article five, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article five, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding residences at Lakeville Station, Smart Road, Overlake District, zones throughout the rest of the article as the S G O D, as new I M three point one point nine, the list of use districts within the existing section three point one, and by adding the following new section seven point seven, and take any other action relative there, too.
Thank you. Before you proceed to read the next seventeen pages...
Thank you.
Is there anyone who needs this read out? Because if you do, I'm going to put it to a vote of the people present. I see no one who objects to us not reading it out, so I am going to simply go by what is in print. Do I have a second to Mr. Merritt's motion? Motion has been made and seconded. Merritt, would you care to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator, it's actually very simple. The development that we're overlaying a district on is currently a Forty-B, which the town has accepted. With the grace of the state and the help of our town council, we helped the public hearing, we discussed it, and we decided that Forty-R has tremendous benefits for the town. And I guess the easiest way I can describe it is to paraphrase our town council, who basically said that Forty-R is a Forty-B with a check. It basically gives walk, local control over what happens in the area. Your only request that the state has is that it be located in a particular district that they're looking for that has all the qualifications of that district. This area happens to have that. They're looking really at developing a transient-oriented type development where people basically get on the train or have most of the services that they need within walking distance rather than getting to their car and driving around.
Thank you. Did the planning board have a report in their hearing?
Yes, we helped the public hearing, and we voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Mr. LaCamera.
Yeah, just to follow up on what Jim Merritt said. Originally, this project was approved as a Forty-B project a year ago, and it was a lot of discussion, you know, throughout the state for these smart growth initiatives. And with the help of Representative Kineser and Representative Quinn and Senator Bernard, we started meeting up with Department of Housing and Community Development back in May. And because what we wanted to do was convert this project into a Forty-R project, and it's been a lot of discussion throughout the state about these projects, but they really haven't been moving forward. And we've been given this opportunity to switch this project from a Forty-B to a Forty-R, and it's actually the same project. A lot of work went into this over the last four months with the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board and the Board Selecting and our town council here to the right and lead our town administrator. We have submitted an application, you know, to the state, a community application, the last week in September, and the application has been approved for this project on September twenty-ninth. So all we need to do this evening is approve this bylaw, and then we can, the planning board would approve the site plan again. And what we get for this is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar zoning incentive payment. So once this bylaw is approved, then we get three hundred and fifty thousand dollar check immediately. Then what they do is they provide a density bonus, and a density bonus is for every unit that's built. In this particular project, there's two hundred and four units, which means that we get six hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that as well, for a total of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We also negotiated a mitigation fee with the developer of three hundred thousand dollars for the project, so, which means we get one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And previously, we would not have gotten all the state grant money. So as our town council says, the difference between a Forty-B and a Forty-R is a big check. So we highly encourage everybody to support this article.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moderator, I'm Don Foster with the zoning board, and I'd like to report that at our September twenty-fifth meeting, the board unanimously voted its support for this motion. Thank you.
Seeing no one coming to the microphone, we will move to a vote. Oh, I am sorry. There is a someone, not a no one.
Joseph Chamberlain, Highland Road. This question or concern is probably best directed to town council. Page one, article, Boston Globe today, detailed the sleazy efforts of many dirtbag developers in dealing with chapter forties. I would assume that there are sufficient safeguards in this, that in spite of the money we're getting, we're not going to be taken to the cleaners.
Town Council? Was that addressed to you? Yes.
I actually haven't read the article in the Boston Globe because I was already on my way to a meeting and the paper hadn't shown up, but I've certainly heard about it today from lots of places. The Inspector General has been investigating Forty-B projects, which, as you may recall, have a limit on how much the developer can make. They're limited to twenty percent. And some unscrupulous developers, given the recent rise in real estate prices between when they had the project permitted and when they actually sold, have tried to figure out ways to sort of bury those profits someplace. And so the extra profit that they make over the twenty percent, which would otherwise go to the town for affordable housing purposes, is retained by the developer. I know the Inspector General has gone through a number of these projects and has questioned the accounting principles that were developed and used by the developers on these. Massachusetts Housing Authority has also looked at these things and is proposing a new set of guidelines. We heard about these last week. They're supposedly rolling them out. They're hiring staff to monitor these projects. I have to say that it's probably a case of the regulations getting developed after the damage has already been done, because the number of Forty-B projects has actually declined in applications relatively recently, and I don't expect it to pop up in huge numbers in the near future. However, Mass Housing is putting that monitoring process in place. Now the Inspector General is paying some attention. We believe that the situation would be discouraged in the future. However, the Forty-R projects are monitored the same way, with DHCD watching, and have the same kinds of limitations, but they are not FortyBs, and they don't get the same sort of scrutiny. They are zoning as of right, as opposed to zoning by permission from the C P A. So we hope with this particular developer that we won't have that to talk particularly about.
Mr. Moderator, just to answer or further clarify Mr. Chamberlain's question, the developer that we're actually dealing with currently has an approved Forty-B project on the table. I think you may be aware of that. But in this particular case, we're not dealing with a potential developer. We already know who that developer is, and he has given us every indication that he is a very scrupulous gentleman. And I'm very glad that he's the one who actually is handling the project. I mean, I don't think, he takes a tremendous risk in allowing the town to do this at the town's benefit, but he was willing to do it for the benefit of the town. To me, that speaks all by itself.
May I, may I get a clarification, Jim? Are you saying that in effect, the developer is going to develop it no matter what, but if we don't vote this this evening, we just don't get the money?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Brian Lewis, do you need my address as well?
It's up to you.
Brian Lewis, I'll leave it at that. Just a point of clarification, on the Forty-B as I know it, the Forty-B, of course, gets set aside, the Forty-R essentially takes its place. The Forty-B never comes back to fruition. It becomes a Forty-R project. That was the first question. The differences in the projects, as far as the credits under the Forty-B structure, there's the ten percent minimum that the town has complied with, has obviously a lot more control over future projects. Does that differ when it goes away from the Forty-B parameters? In other words, you know, is that still, are the credits granted for the units under Forty-R and given those credits to Lakeville like they would be under Forty-B?
You want to handle that? Jim, do you want the town council?
Credits are, well, I'll defer to town council. The credits are still there. We gain benefit from all of them. In this particular project, we gain all of them. It's just not ten percent we gain all of them.
And in answer to your first question, I'm going to defer to town council with your mic permission.
The units that are created in Forty-R district that are affordable count the same way they would in a Forty-B. So they will count towards the town's ten percent in terms of calculating and protecting the unit if the town prefers a Forty-B project. Because they are in a Forty-R district, there are required densities and there are required levels of affordability. But once those units have the deed riders on them, they will count the same way as they would in a Forty-B.
And the parameters, as far as the qualifications for the program, are the same for affordability?
Yes.
The same. And then lastly, as far as the future of a Forty-R district versus a Forty-B, and correct me if I'm wrong, on a Forty-B project, the project is presented, it's approved, it goes forward, it gets built out in whatever number of phases. Once that Forty-R is established, does that then create an opportunity for further growth or further addition to the number of units or otherwise change in the structure of the plan as proposed initially?
It could, however, in this particular instance, we have a small district, and so it is really the parameters of this project. In some cases, Kingston, for example, the Forty-R that they're looking at is a long buildout, all kinds of things, but it's a much larger district. We have defined this district to be just this Forty-B project, so it can't really handle any additional growth, this, the parameters of the project that was originally approved by your zoning project.
Okay, fair enough. And then, I noticed that was the last one, but one other question.
No, this is the next, the last last.
This is the next, I promise this is the last one. As far as, actually, you know what? I'm sorry, the question was answered, I apologize.
Thank you.
It is the last one.
Yes, sir.
Carl Furst, Hill Street. Is there, are there any strings attached to the check for the state?
Yes, Mr. LaCamera.
As I said, the application has already been submitted to the state. The state has approved the application. We have the letter from DHCD, and once this gets approved this evening, and then gets approved by the Attorney General's office, because all bylaws have to be approved by the Attorney General, then they will issue a check for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once the building permits are issued, and the contractor, the developer, is expected to start in March, once they're issued by the building inspector, then we get our density bonus, et cetera.
So in other words, when the state gives the money, the town can spend it or do as it pleases?
Well, like we spend any money, we come to town meeting, and town meeting decides how the money's going to be spent.
No, that's fine. That answers the question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no one else to the microphone, we have to pass this by a two-thirds vote, so tellers must count. It's a zoning article. All in favor of Article six, please raise your cards. Yes?
Eighteen.
Thank you.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thank you.
Fifty-five.
Thank you. You may put your cards down. All right, all in opposed to this article, please now raise your cards.
Zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you. Vote is one hundred and six to nothing. I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section, three point two point eight, which identifies the location of the residences at Lakeville Station, Smart Road, Overlake District, and zoning map by placing a parcel of land comprised of approximately ten point eight seven acres, more or less, and shown on a Lakeland Assessors map as possible sixty-two dash three dash seven A, sixty-two dash three dash seven B, sixty-two dash three dash seven G, sixty-two dash three dash ten I, and sixty-two dash three dash ten J, within the newly created residences at Lakeville Station, Smart Road, Overlake District.
Thank you. Is there a second? Please consult your locust map on page twenty-one, if you wish to see how this is located. Leave us in living color. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Merritt?
The article, Mr. Moderator, basically just places the description within the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And as you look on the map, it gives a reference, for those of you who are here, as to exactly where the Overlake District is. The underlying district remains industrial. The underlying district would be the Smart Road, Overlake District.
Which is the striped piece, right?
Yes.
Did the planning board have a hearing?
Yes, we held the hearing the same night we held the previous hearing, and we voted unanimously approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This also has to be accounted vote. It's a zoning article. All in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you. Put your cards down. All now opposed to this article, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Vote was ninety-nine to nothing. I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Article eight, the last article.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the official zoning map by changing the business zoning distance for the property as described below, in the now current two-hundred-foot depth as measured from the front of the property bordering Main Street, which is Route One-O-Five, but limits as shown on the plan entitled, "Plan Showing Area to Be Re-zoned From Residential to Business District, dated August fifteenth, Two Thousand and Six, prepared by Climate Engineering Incorporated. A portion of the ten point six acres contained on Assessors Map sixty-two, Block Four, Block Two, currently owned by Pauline Leonard, pervert described as follows..."
Please stop. If anyone wishes to have the rest of it, it's all the meats and bounds, which go on per page. Does anyone object to our not reading it? I see no one objecting, so we will not read it. Is there a second? A second to the Article eight. May I have a copy and would you speak to it, please?
On the very last page of the warrant, page twenty-two, you'll notice that there is a section also highlighted. This is the entire parcel that is under common ownership, and with the request of the planning board, we had asked the developer about considering rezoning the entire parcel business rather than keeping it in residential zone. He was very willing and agreeable to doing that. Planning board didn't hold a hearing on it. We recommend that unanimously to approve. And again, the developer, even though it's a different developer, we feel gained, or the town gained a lot by him doing this modification, and he did it at our request. So I urge everyone to vote in favor of...
Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, we must move this by two-thirds vote, and it must be counted, so tellers, one last time. All in favor of Article eight, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you.
Two.
Two, thank you. The vote is one hundred in favor, two against. I declare this to have passed by more than two-thirds vote. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve. Motion has been made. May I have a second? Motion is made second. All in favor of dissolving, raise your cards. Thank you. May put them down. All opposed? No one's opposed? Go see our C I S. We've got a half of this left. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.